Good evening and welcome to the Village of Westmont combination meeting, the committee, the whole meeting, and the official voting village board meeting for August 11th, 2011. The clerk, please take the roll call.
Mayor Ron.
Here.
The clerk's here. Trustee Emery.
Here.
Trustee Fleming.
Here.
Trustee Klevenow.
Here.
Trustee Nero.
Here.
Trustee Scott.
Here.
Trustee Seneca.
Here.
Manager Searle.
Here.
Attorney Zeminek.
Here.
Police Chief Mulhern.
Here.
Deputy Police Chief Gunther.
Here.
Fire Chief Trout.
Here.
Economic Development Director and Assistant Manager Kimball.
Here.
Public Works Director May.
Here.
Acting Finance Director Parker.
Here.
Deputy Fire Chief Weiss.
Here.
Fire Administrative Director Scowl.
Here.
I hope I didn't miss anyone. I think I got everybody.
Thank you. Please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on our agenda before us this evening are the minutes of the combined committee, the whole meeting, and the board meeting held August 1st, 2011, and the five budget workshop meetings for fiscal year 2011, 2012. Any questions?
The only thing I noticed on it was on the trustees, the last three budget meetings, when named the trustees that were present, there was at the end of a line trustee, and then when it started the next line, it said trustee again. There was just an extra trustee on the last, I believe it was the last three.
I could cross it off.
Yeah.
So.
That was the only ones I saw. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving right along, open forum.
Actually, this is a voting meeting, so we're gonna...
Oh, motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Seneca.
Second, Scott.
Final discussion. Roll call.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Klevenow.
Present.
Trustee Emery.
Present.
Open forum. First open forum request is from David Grigg at 251 James Drive. Mr. Grigg. Grigg.
G R I G G. I'm here this evening. I received a letter in the mail in regards to a violation of an ordinance with my boat in my driveway. For the last thirteen, or last fifteen years, thirteen of which I've had the boat in the same spot, never had any problems. I got a letter saying I had to move it. I wasn't in compliance with the ordinance. The way my house is built and where it's at, I'm on a dead-end street. I'm on the backside of a park. I can't get to the back of my house, and there's only 36 inches from the side of my brick to the property lines. There is no way to get in compliance with this ordinance, and I was wondering if there's a grandfather clause, a special ordinance, or if I can just leave it there. It's not like I store it there. I bring it in in the summer to go fishing, and take my grandkids skiing, and then I take it out in winter time. So, I take a picture, shows it alongside my truck there, which you can't even see the boat when my truck is parked there. And that's the only place I can park my truck, due to the sidewalk. So, it's not like anybody sees it. There's only two houses to the end of the street, and I've got a close-up picture. Maybe it showed a little better.
What is the length of time? When do you bring the boat to your driveway, and when do you take it away?
I usually bring the boat to my house in May or June, and I keep it there like June, July, August. And usually in September, it starts getting cold. If it's nice, like last year, I kept it all the way to like October 10th, because the weather was just absolutely gorgeous. And then as soon as it got cold, I took it and put it into storage. I stored it in my mom's backyard. You know, she don't use a car in the wintertime, so it's safe for me to store it there. I mean, that's where I took it tonight, because I didn't want any tickets or any trouble, and I put it in her backyard. But it's a little hard in the summertime, because she does use her car. But I just can't see any reason I can't get in compliance with this ordinance, and I was just wondering if there's any special thing I can do, or if I, you know.
Basically, it's only parked in your driveway maybe four months, over four months out of the year.
Yes.
Well, and then sometimes it's even gone, because you're out using it.
Because I'm fishing, or, yeah. I'm retired now, so I bought it in 1995, and now that I can use it, like I said, it's always been there when I worked, and I was used a lot less than it is now.
Will it fit in your garage?
It would fit in there if I tear down the wall and lower the engine, because my house is one of those that's, like, your house is built out back and in the garage, so you lose like four foot of the garage. So, if I take everything out of the garage and go in at an angle, and lower the engine down, I can get it in there. But then it's nothing else, no, my garage, my wife's car'd have to come out. And then when she comes home at night, she'd have to park her car and walk in the dark. I just, soon the garage door opened up, she'd drive in, and she closes the door, and she gets out. But that's just my preference. But I mean, the boat's not there that often. My neighbors don't have any problems with it, like I said, on the third house in the end. I just can't understand the ordinance. I can't comply to it. I didn't build the home. And even if they gave me special permission to drive on the track in the park, I think it'd look a lot uglier in the back of my house than the flowers I have there now, so.
Any new neighbors in the neighborhood?
Pardon me?
Any houses that were just sold in the neighborhood, and somebody new came in?
One, but the lady doesn't, I've talked to her a lot, and she, you know, her kids come up, and twice they've come by. In the last 15 years, I've gotten four notices, because if I park it when it rains, I turn it around from this position to drain it, because you can't see it. But this is on a hill, and when it fills with water, I'll turn it around for a day or two and drain the water out, and then turn it back up, and it'll cross the sidewalk. And we've had three or four complaints in the last 15 years that the tongue was blocking the sidewalk. And then I moved it. That's about it.
Well, the ordinance has been on the book for many years, requiring, you know, boats and trailers and stuff to be parked in the rear of a house. And if a homeowner can't comply, then the other option would be storage off-site. This is a zoning code provision, so you can go through the normal procedures to request a variance, which requires payment of some money, and a public hearing process where your neighbors would be notified, and this board could rule on that. I guess the only other option, the third option, would be if the board wants to consider some sort of change to the zoning ordinance, provide exceptions to allow all boats in residential districts to be parked in a driveway during, you know, certain specified months. The ordinance was enacted for aesthetic reasons, and also for safety reasons, because with the length of the boats and props sticking out, sometimes they do overhang the sidewalk, et cetera.
I don't think we want to open up that can of worms of...
I think since it is a zoning issue, then we have to go through the appropriate procedure for, if somebody wants to, a variance to a zoning, but we can't just arbitrarily grant such a request.
Yeah, that's the problem here. This board just can't say, sure, you can go ahead and park your boat there, and no one else can. There is a process you'd have to go through, because it's a zoning ordinance requirement, which means you'd have to meet with the Economic Development Department of the village, meet with the staff, and they can guide you through that process. It does appear that you have a hardship, and that you can't get to your backyard?
There's no, I'm on the retention pod.
And again, your only other option would be off-site storage.
I can't afford that. I'm retired now.
If a variance, if he did go for the variance, would the variance go for the life of the boat, or for any boat he purchases it? Does it stay with the property?
It's our option.
That's what I'm questioning. We have...
Yeah, you can restrict that however you wish.
How do we handle RVs?
They also have to be parked...
I see those all over town in driveways.
In the rear. I think we carved, I have to check. We may have carved out an exception for like a weekend, when you come in, and you're loading it up, and things like that. So, you do have a couple-day grace period. But if you're going to store those onsite, they have to be on a separate either hard or gravel surface behind the front of your house.
Four consecutive days.
I don't even know if it can be in the, behind the front of the house. I mean, we had a boat situation back, what was it, 97, with Mayor Burke, and he had to remove his, and his was on the side of the house. And even the mayor had to move his boat out and put it in storage. So.
I don't know. For years, I lived with somebody that boated all summer, and he had his boat right up the street. It never bothered me.
No.
No, it came out during voting season, it went away.
Based on a permit from ED.
Okay.
As soon as voting season was over.
I think it's a unique situation. I mean, you can't put it in the back, you can't put it in the side to put that burden on renting it for the few months you use it in the summer. I mean, I, if you went through the variance process, I'd have no problem approving it. I don't know how everybody else here feels, but I, in your situation, I clearly think it's fine. It's not some big gaudy boat. It's a small fishing boat, and it's...
Yeah, as you can see, when the truck is parked there, you can't even see it. You have to pull in front of my house to actually find it.
A few months out of the year to save you the money of renting it, so you could afford that boat, I would, I have no problem approving that at all. And I don't know if we want to straw poll everybody else here, how they feel, to save you the time.
No, can't straw poll her.
Absolutely not. This is an open forum request.
I find nothing offensive about it. I would like to see you go ahead and go through the processes the attorney has suggested, and, you know, work with economic development, see what path you can take, and then ultimately, it might come back to us, and we can fix that. I think it's a reasonable request.
All right. Minor cost, but hopefully, if it's granted, it'll outweigh the cost of renting it over all the season.
We use the board to get a chance to see what the lay of the land is for the community that you live in.
Because notice would be given to your, would have to go out to the neighbors, so that, you know, if they, by all appearances, thought it was okay, but they come en masse, you know, we have to take that into account. But there's a process that you have to go through, so, you know, that's, because we have to do that for everybody. This isn't singling you out. It's making sure that, you know, everybody's treated the same, so.
Okay.
So, you understand what the process is. They're coming to the, starting in the clerk's office, and to be put on the agenda as an item before planning a zoning commission.
Okay. And I can do that, what, Monday?
Yes.
Or tomorrow.
You can come in tomorrow. Actually, you will go into the economic development.
Okay.
That's great.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item is Elaine Carmichael, from the Westmont Public Library, one of our commissioners. Elaine.
Hi, I'm Elaine Carmichael, a trustee at the Westmont Public Library. And I'm here to invite everybody to rededication of our flagpole, and flag. We had to redo the plaza area at the library due to several safety issues, as well as a problem with water drainage. And so, the flagpole has been moved to the center of the plaza. And on Saturday, this Saturday, August 13th, at 9:30 a.m., we're going to have the rededication. The speaker will be Chief Mulhern, and he says he's got a speech down to 45 minutes.
Oh, who? How'd you do that?
He's been working.
If you have any questions about the rededication, you can call 630-969-5625, extension 218. And if you can't come Saturday, stop by anytime to see the new plaza, the remodeled children's section. The upstairs has been remodeled and improved. And there are some other improvements that have been made over the past four years. There will be someone who would be happy to give you a tour of the library. So, this is just an extension of the invitation to the whole community. Thank you.
On your, what came through the chamber and stuff, there was a request that we needed to RSVP.
That's correct.
I don't know if you still need to. I did RSVP today, but I didn't know if I hit the right extension, so.
Good, good. And it's the number that I gave. The RSVP was supposed to be by today, but I told Christine I would be here tonight inviting everybody. So, if you could call tomorrow, if you're planning to come, that would be helpful. And I think if you want to just show up on Saturday, I think that would be fine, too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. Next, I'd like to call our fire chief, Frank Trout, up to the podium, to speak on the back-to-school kids' safety camp. Chief Trout.
Thank you, Mayor, Board. With us today are some of our students from our kids' safety camp that we held yesterday and today. And I'm going to turn this over to Deputy Chief Weiss, who's developed the program over the last few years. And Dave?
Thanks, Chief. Good evening. Yes, we had our back-to-school kids' safety camp the last two days. The camp this year was sponsored by the Fire and Police Department. It was co-hosted by the Westmont Special Events Corporation, the Westmont Citizens' Fire Alumni and Police Alumni. We had 36 wonderful children this year. We did have to turn some children away, because we got too big. So, hopefully, next year, if we can put it in the budget again, and have the three classes, one in June, July, and August, we'll be able to get all those kids in that are interested. The class this year couldn't happen if it wasn't for some great sponsors that we have in our village. The Citizens' Fire Alumni donated, contributed to the class this year. The Police Alumni did. Westmont Special Events Corporation did. Duncan Donance did on 63rd Street. Jewel Food on Ogden Avenue. Uncle Bubbs donated lunch one day. Westbrook Market donated cookies for graduation today. Vandenberg Ambulance handles all the transportation of patients from the Westmont Nursing Rehab, donated to the program, and also the Westmont Nursing Rehab Center. Without their help, and without their donations, we wouldn't be able to feed the kids at lunches two days in a row, and all their snacks, and morning breakfast. What I'd like to do now is turn it over to Fire Medic Radcliffe. He was the coordinator of the program this year. Bob's been involved in the program ever since we started, but he's kind of helped Steve Stapleton. Steve wasn't able to help us this year, so he's going to talk a little bit about what the kids did on each day, and then we have some pictures he's going to show, and just explain what those are.
Great. Good.
Deputy Chief. Good evening. The first day consisted of swearing out 36 members, children, and as honorary firemen for the department. And then we talked about, a lot about fire safety. I wasn't a big fan. They didn't like me when I sent them home with homework that first night, to do with the family, about smoke detector placement in the house, escape drills if there was a fire in the home. We taught them first aid. And then we also had a dispatcher come in and teach them about 911. We had a simulated 911 phone, where they actually got to call it, and the dispatcher asked them for information, so they got experience doing that. The second, today, we started off by going over their homework. And then we were talking about water rescue, school safety, and everything. And then we proceeded to go work on water competition, worked on teamwork, and it pretty much ended with a free-for-all water fight with everybody, which all the kids seemed to enjoy. All their aggression turned on to me. Here are some pictures that we took. This was a group photo we took in front of the ambulance today. Second one's the kids at the table. This is when we're going over first aid. We learned about bandaging wounds, applying pressure. And this was in conjunction with the Police Department. They came and showed their vehicles to everybody. Hopefully, they don't get to see the backseat, so. Detective Bantooth came in, and he was a bike, and they went in. We had a bike rodeo today. Any kid that didn't have a helmet, we gave them a helmet, talked about safety, wearing helmets, and the injuries that can happen. And this is during the bike rodeo, way different obstacle course they rode through. They seemed to enjoy that a lot. And then the part where they all enjoyed the water fight. We had competitions where two teams had to go, advanced a hose line as a group to go through both tunnels, to see which team could spray the house first. And as you can see from this one, being the big kid I am, I had to get involved on it. And so, everyone had a good time. It was a great program overall. They learned a lot of good information. Some of the parents came up and said to me that afterwards, they went home and talked about it, all the stuff that they learned. So, that was a big positive thing. So, hopefully, the village continues to support it, and all the sponsors we had, and hopefully, the kids keep coming back. And so, so I thank you.
Thank you very much.
This was a good class.
I have a question for the students. Maybe a spokesperson can answer. What do you think the most important thing you learned was? What was the most important thing in the class?
About safety.
About safety.
About safety.
Yeah, what's...
Well, if you learn safety, then you can be a lot safer, and you won't get killed.
That's a good point.
And what does somebody else think was the most fun part of safety camp?
Well, I thought it was the water fight.
How about you, Rose? What do you think?
I think it was the bike rodeo.
Oh.
Yeah, that was good, too.
Learning how to be safe with your bikes. That's good.
How about someone else?
Well, good. Congratulations on completing it. Tell all your friends to sign up next time.
Sign up next time.
Just so everyone knows, at the graduation ceremony today, each student and camper was asked what was their favorite activity. And all of us, staff, has a monumental task next year, because there were three favorites, and we've got to try to figure out we can make them all at the same time. If we can somehow meld the water fight with the bike rodeo while they're eating donuts, I think it's the top three. So, our task is trying to put all three together. I also want to commend all the staff that was involved in this Fire Department, Police Office, and the sign. This was a program that was very, very popular several years ago, and it has now returned. And you see just a sampling of the students that were here, I'd like to say over 36. And the question was, you know, who had more fun? I don't know if it was the officers and the firefighter, or the campers. I think it was equal among everyone. And we even, like I always ask, was there anybody who did not want to go? Did a parent make them come to the class? And usually in a class like this, you get one or two, and there was one. And the question was, after that, now, aren't you glad you were here? And a big smile came across her face, and she said yes. And that's our goal. And I want to commend and thank all you guys, and congratulate you all, and thank you for coming today, because even though there's no test, I want to thank you for coming and supporting us here tonight as well. So, we thank you for that.
I just wanted to finish up. We did have a couple volunteers each day come and help us keep the kids kind of in line and organize. And Martha was there both days and volunteered from 9 to 3 o'clock each day. So, it was great to have the alumni, Police and Fire Alumni there.
Great.
Two last things I think Chief Trout had, and I can speak to them real quick, unless you want to, Chief?
Okay.
We want to remind everybody about our 9/11 service on Sunday, September 11th. This year, it's going to be at 1 o'clock at Fire Station 2. And so, if we can remind everybody, pass that word. And then also, our Citizens' Fire Academy, that is back in the program again this year, is going strong, and we're up to, I believe, 12 people that are registered, so the class is going to happen. And it's going to start on Wednesday, September 7th, and go to November, Wednesday, November 9th. So, if anybody is interested in signing up for that program, you can contact the Fire Department, and we'll get you any information. Be more than happy to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a little addition on our 9/11 service. Last night, I was able to contact a young man who will be our main speaker, who is a survivor of the 9/11 attack. He was in one of the towers. And so, he will be speaking on September 11th at 1:00 p.m. And so, I definitely invite everyone from the village and surrounding villages, and to come and be a part of our ceremony. And Westmont, and I believe it was Naperville, the only two towns in DuPage County who've had a consistent memorial service each year since 9/11. I know there's tag-on people now, the towns who are paying tribute, which is good. But Westmont and Naperville, the two towns have been consistent in being true patriots. So, I encourage you all to be there and listen to a great speaker. His name is Thomas Jones. And I welcome you all on September 11th. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad that we were able to work into our budget, money for the safety camps and some of the other police and fire camps and programs that are going to be conducted, that have been or will be conducted this fall. So, thank both of you, and I'm sure we will find money somewhere to continue those programs, because it's a great thing for our community, and I would like to see it continue. Thank you very much. And the last thing I would like to mention is I have a note here that this year is the celebration of 60 years of business in the Village of Westmont for Westmont Floral. And that business was started back in 1951 by Rose Graventi and her husband. And in recent years, the daughter Teresa has taken over the business. So, they've been an institution here in downtown Westmont for many, many years. And our congratulations go out to the owners and all the staff that have provided floral arrangements for this village for 60 years. Congratulations. And the last thing I wanted to mention is a request, executive session for personnel at the conclusion of this meeting. Moving right along, our village clerk.
I just have two quick announcements tomorrow. Friday is the electronics recycling at Ty Warner Park from 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., so take advantage of it. And on Monday, we will have a Public Information Committee meeting here at 6:00, right here in the boardroom. So, that's Monday. We will have that meeting at 6:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, our village attorney, John.
I do want to mention one other thing, because I don't know how many people are aware of this, and we discussed it the other day. The backseat seatbelt law has gone into effect. It went into effect July 1st. So, everybody should be aware of that. If you're in the backseat, you have to have a seatbelt on. There's no options anymore. We had a big discussion about this at Rotary, and...
August 1st? Is that when it went in?
It started July 1st.
July 1st?
So, we're all a little late on this, but it is in effect. So, put those seatbelts on.
Thank you. John Zeminek, our village attorney.
Nothing to report tonight. Thank you.
Ron Searle, village manager.
Thank you. I just wanted to update the board. We'd had a discussion at the last set of meetings. We had invited come with us, and to come in and talk about some of the recent power outage problems. And we have rescheduled that meeting for Tuesday, September 6th. So, that'll be under the reports section on that agenda. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee items. Start with trustee Seneca.
Thank you. Just want to remind everyone, this weekend, tomorrow, and Saturday, we're moving Ravinia from the north down to Ty Warner Park. Westmont's own theater group, Progressive Village Performance Network, will be doing Summer Night Live. It'll be a series of skits and fun, and just really great entertainment. So, that will be tomorrow from 6:00 to 8:30 in the evening. And pack a picnic basket, bring the family out, enjoy beautiful Ty Warner Park and the beautiful weather that we're going to have. And on Saturday, it will be from 2:00 to 4:30. So, I hope a lot of people can come out for that. It will be a really nice event. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Nero.
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Trustee Scott.
Thank you, sir. First, I have a general reminder that the village comprehensive plan process is underway. We are making every effort to ensure that you, the residents, business owners, and interested parties have an opportunity to participate and provide feedback during the upcoming 12- to 14-month visioning process. There are two types of participation and interaction. The first is the ongoing collection of information through the use of mapper tool, surveys, and do-it-yourself kits. The second are community meetings and public hearings. These will be announced as they're scheduled. The survey for residents, business owners, and community facility providers, which is like the Library Park District and Public Works, were rolled out last week. Community groups can request do-it-yourself kits to help identify their unique concerns by contacting Economic Development Department. The project website can be linked from the village homepage, Get Involved, Stay Informed. We encourage members of the public to begin to use it. Check back regularly for updates and spread the word. The Get Involved link will bring you to the survey questionnaires and community mapper tool, which allows you to identify specific locations and make comments and suggestions online. The Stay Informed link brings you to the project update page. The documents link has summary notes from our first comprehensive advisory committee meeting. The steering committee, which is the advisory committee, met in July and plans to meet again in September to discuss preliminary findings. This is truly everyone's plan, and a variety of options are available for taking part in shaping the vision, the future vision of our community. We hope that everyone that is available will participate whenever they can. So I want to get that information out. I also wanted to ask, is there any update about census status? Have we heard anything?
We have no information yet.
Okay. Are we able to get a GPS report for the mosquito spraying that went on, so we know that all parts of the community were covered?
Yes. Yes, we can request that.
And the other thing I want to bring up is about going back to two meetings, or four meetings a month. I've had quite a few calls from residents and coming into my business and talking to me about the inconsistencies. And I think it's important that the residents know exactly when our meetings are, that they can always come here on a Thursday to talk, and then we'll be voting on Monday. It gives us an opportunity to think about things that are going on and to make, you know, decisions on it. So I'd like that to be brought up for discussion again.
Yeah, I like the different options that the manager gave us. I mean, even if we consistently say it's going to be every Monday, you're right, you know, the public needs to know when it's going to be. If it's every, you know, two Mondays a month, then they know it's two Mondays a month.
Well, I still want to go back to the four meetings. Unless there's absolutely reason that there's nothing going on, I like the four meetings again because they have to know when they can come before without having to go to the village website every time to see what's been changed.
Right, I agree. But if we did it just once, they would know if, you know...
Not necessarily.
I think we've done them a terrible disservice this evening. This is the first time in anybody can remember in history that a meeting was combined to a Thursday night. The ordinance says village board meetings are the first, shall be held the first and third Mondays of the month. I don't see where there's any authority to vote on a Thursday night, and I'm going to stick with that. And if it is insisted that we're voting tonight, I will only vote present on every single thing that's up for vote. For residents to not know when things are going on, you go on the website even today, it says that we have a meeting Monday night. If...I have trouble figuring out what we're supposed to be doing and when. I think that it's abysmal to expect residents to figure it out. It's unfair to them, and it's absurd. The consistency in this town is certainly what's provided by ordinance and to start jacking things all over. Especially, who are we to say that something isn't important or is important and can be moved at last minute? I mean, look at the people here, and I know exactly which item they're here for. And theoretically, we were to discuss it tonight and to vote on Monday, that people who may have taken the podium and said, you know, I really want to follow up with an email to the board because four people after me said something, and I would have added this if I could, we're not going to be given that opportunity, nor are they to contact us by email or phone over the weekend. So my vote tonight, if I'm forced to vote on anything, will be present. That's it. I'm not voting. It's not a voting night.
One of the issues is that there, I know we, the reason for this was to save a few bucks, but there's a cost of providing transparent and good government. And that's what the cost is, that we're here for the four meetings, and I think we lose more than the few dollars that we save.
Plus, the building's going to be open now Monday night for a public information meeting. Where's the savings? The building is going to be open. It has to be staffed if it's open.
Well, the difference is, we will not be paid $100 for a 15-minute meeting, which is an abuse of taxpayer dollars.
Except for the mayor and the clerk are getting paid.
Well, because they're salaried.
I understand it. That should be changed, then.
You can change it six months before the next election.
Yeah.
That's your right. There's nothing the mayor and I can do about it.
Yeah. And I think we should look at that.
I'm a little tired of a finger being pointed at us.
There's a fairness about it. That's all there is.
What?
There's a fairness about it.
I'm just saying, you point the finger. That's by ordinance.
No, I'm not pointing. I'm just sitting there saying, but that's what it is.
But you're always so nasty about it.
When there's an article in the paper that points out the trustees, it doesn't sit there and say, but the clerk and the mayor are still getting paid.
But you have told everybody that we are, and there's nothing we can do about that. It's by ordinance.
It said they're salaried. The article said they're salaried.
Well, the whole issue is very simple. For years and years and years, our meetings, committee of the whole, have been on Thursday nights, and the voting meetings have been on Monday night. So going forward from this point, any consideration consolidation that comes to me again, I will say no. I want the residents of this village to have the capability to come to us on a Thursday night and talk. It never seemed to bother us in the past if the Monday night was a 15-minute voting meeting.
It didn't during good budget times. It didn't. But, you know, when you can save $25,000 a year...
Excuse me. Let me finish, okay?
But you're right.
For once, let me finish. Before interrupting me, thank you. For years, we have operated on a premise of Thursday and Monday nights for our meetings. Now, by us consolidating, especially tonight on a Thursday night, I can't remember in all the years that I've been on this board that we have ever voted on a Thursday night. I can't even remember a consolidated meeting on a Thursday night. I think that the residents of this village expect us, and I don't really think, I think if you took a poll of the residents of this village and asked them if us being paid what we're being paid, because trust me, I'm not doing this for the money. I do this for the village, and I do it for the residents of this village because I care about this village. If I was in it for the money, I'm way in the wrong road here. So as far as the money goes, anything that I get goes back into this village, be it the chamber, whatever. It all goes back into the village. I don't use it. So the residents should have the right to have a weekend to contact us going into a Monday night voting situation. Going forward, I think we need to go back to our regular rotation schedule the way it has been in the past. I don't think there needs to be any more, really any more talk about us consolidation or changing it or being it on Mondays or being it Thursdays or whatever. I mean, it's a case of, and the other thing that needs to be known by the residents of this village, yeah, we get paid $100 on a meeting night. That's 100% correct. But we did away with any pay that we were getting for all the budgetary meetings, any special meetings that we have. With the comprehensive plan coming up, there's going to be meetings coming left and right. We did away with all of that. We don't get paid for any of that anymore. The only thing that we get paid for are the meeting nights. That's it. So I don't think the residents of this village are that opposed to us having our meetings on Thursdays and Monday nights. I really don't.
Well, I just think we've asked our employees to bite the bullet so hard that all we're trying to do is help them.
Kind of pony up a little bit. I mean, Aurora, city of Chicago, has one a month in each of their districts. I mean, if towns much larger than us can do it, you know, I just...
Then you do it by ordinance, and you change the meetings so everybody knows.
And you can do that six months before the election, which is a short time away.
But by also consolidating the meetings, what's been happening is we have also been putting a burden on staff's time because we all have to get a phone call and go over the agenda. I don't know if you do, but I know Patty takes time to go over the agenda with me to explain why we're consolidating it. Now we have pulled staff away from what they should be doing to try to get a hold of all six of us or more, or the attorney, whoever ends up getting it. Plus, we have Shannon, who's got to start getting a hold of all the petitioners or anybody on the agenda and trying to get them to change their date.
I absolutely agree with that. I absolutely agree with that. That's why I think if we just did something structured...
You just need to be consistent with it.
Yeah, be consistent, whatever.
To vote on it the night we discuss it means we have now taken our constituents, our residents, and said, I don't care what you have to say because I'm voting on this tonight. So we get, I mean, I've used to get an email or a voice message from somebody after a vote, and they'd go, why did you vote that way? And I go, well, you know, you probably saw it Thursday. You had till Monday to call me. Sorry, that was my vote. This way, I feel bad because now we've totally shut them out. We have shut out our residents on being able to voice their opinion. They do not have that time anymore. And we can't ask 25,000 people to be coming into a board meeting because they're concerned. I got, I think we all got that email from somebody after the badge deal last time. What if that was something? What if we said, yeah, we're going to have the badge go through? Nobody understood what the badge was when they saw it on the agenda until they saw it on the podium and understood it was a police star badge. That's why that thing came out. She had no idea that, you know, trustees were given police star badges before.
Well, you know, I think maybe we do, you know, I'm not opposed to going four meetings from now until the time in which we can legally change it. I just think it's a waste of taxpayer dollars to spend $1,000 for 15 minutes.
Well, I always figure, look, I saved the village money when I went off to FEMA, so you can do the same thing too. Every time we don't come. The also thing, on moving it on another night like this on a Thursday, we do, and I know Sue does, and I'm sure most of the board, if not all of them, we look ahead on our calendars to figure out when we can go on vacation. And if this was a date that somebody had scheduled and they tried to come back, now, I scheduled myself to come back on a committee of the whole when I was working for FEMA, and you guys canceled the meeting. I could have put in another couple of days and helped some more victims out there, but I came back to be head of committee of the whole, and you canceled. So, you know, it's the same thing as vacations, anything else.
Yeah, we definitely need structure.
And if we do it every, twice a month, that means what we're discussing that one first Monday of the month, we don't vote on for two weeks to the third Monday of the month. That's two weeks we're asking petitioners to wait for a vote. That's not fair either. When we at least discuss things on a Thursday...
When did we do that?
We didn't. I said that was an option. This is an option. If we went to, everybody said in the beginning to go to two days, or two days a month, that we could discuss it at one meeting but vote on it another. That's asking a petitioner to wait two weeks.
If we, yeah, if we had something, or we could call a special meeting, too.
Yeah, and a special meeting you don't get paid for. Damn, I knew you were going to do that.
Pat, let me interrupt you then. We have a lot of stuff to cover and a lot of people, and why don't we put it on an agenda?
Sounds like a good idea.
May I go back to trustee Scott?
Yeah, let him finish.
Was the last person that I recognized to speak this evening. Trustee Scott, do you have anything further?
No, I think I've said enough tonight.
Thank you.
Self-patient.
Trustee Klevanow.
Just one other item. I did get a call. I let it go through voicemail, being it was an 800 number. Cam Edison has been calling, and I found out my neighbor, who was in the room here too, got the same call. They're leaving a voice message that there's going to be a power outage tomorrow between 9:00 and 11:00. They're hoping it's only a two-hour outage for scheduled repairs. Now, I'm on East Des Moines Street, so I don't know how far this outage is going to be or if it even is going to be. It was such a shock to get this, you know, recording, but I did check with my neighbor here, and she got the same recording. So we're kind of expecting from 9:00 to 11:00 tomorrow to have a power outage, hopefully not longer.
In the morning, right?
In the morning, from what I recalled listening. And also, the public information committee meeting was not on the village calendar. So if we can put it on the village calendar. The only thing on there was our meeting for Monday, and when you go into the star, it tells you it was moved to tonight, but when you just go on the star, it doesn't say it was canceled. So, and that's all I have except for the mosquito thing. I would like the GPS reading because I didn't hear them at all, and my neighbors didn't hear them. And I know that one time I requested it, we found out they didn't do my street. So if we could, and maybe make it just a, whenever they say they're doing it, just say, foul it up with a demand to see what streets, because I don't want to pay these people if they're missing some of our streets. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Trustee Fleming.
The only thing that I'd like to say tonight, and it's kind of on a more of a public note, my wife Laura and I have accepted the gracious request of the Westmont Rotary Club, and we are going to be hosting an exchange student for this coming year, for the school year. She'll be attending Westmont High School. She arrives on Monday. She is from Brazil, and her name is Camilla. She prefers to be called Bella. She's a very nice young lady, and as a year goes along, there will be different functions in that, that she will be attending in that, but she will be residing with us. And for that particular part of the year, a lot goes into this. We technically are her legal guardians for the entire time she is here. So we adopt her as a daughter and take her into our house, but I think that it'll be a lot of fun. The fun thing is, we've kind of talked back and forth already and emailed. She wants to learn English a little bit better, and at the same time, I told her, well, I would like to learn some Portuguese because that is the spoken language of their country. So I just wanted everybody to know that she will be around. You will see her, different functions in that, and I hope everyone welcomes her warmly. Thank you. That's all I have.
I would just like to add to that, trustee Fleming, that having been a member of the LaGrange Rotary Club, the Westmont Rotary Club, for many years, my wife and I have hosted two exchange students over the year, and we've also hosted a business, a gentleman from a business exchange group from Japan. And it is a truly a wonderful experience. I would recommend it highly. We did have a few language problems with the first gal that we had. She came to our house first, but by the time she left, working with myself, my wife, and our three children, she was very, for the use of the vernacular, a very happy clam. And it is truly a wonderful experience, and I would recommend it for everyone. And I think those of us in Westmont, those of us in the Rotary Club need to spend some time with her while she's here. Thank you. And finally, trustee Emery.
Nothing else this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Unfinished business, annexation of property. Order to consider the following requests from the Westmont Park District for property commonly known as the S-curve property. A, an ordinance approving the annexation of a portion of the S-curve property. B, an ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Park District. We have representatives from the Park District to speak on this item. To begin.
Good evening. I'm Ken Kubisa. I'm the attorney for the Park District. As you know, a while back, we filed a petition for annexation agreements and to annex this piece of property. This is what we call the S-curve property at Cass and 35th. This is Bob Fleck with me from the Park District. And we wanted to, the Park District wanted to rezone the property to a multiple-family rezoning with the idea of perhaps selling it when the market got better, raise some cash for other projects, other land acquisition in the village. Since that time, the village of Oak Brook objected to that and raised some issues concerning the restrictions against that property. We've taken that all into consideration, and at this point, we've withdrawn our request for annexation agreements and for rezoning. What we'd like to do is bring it into the village like it should have been brought in in 1985 when this deal came down. And we're talking about only half an acre, not the whole piece. As it turned out, in 1985, when this property was annexed to the village and the hotel was built across the street and the S-curve was rerouted, a piece of the property that the Park District received from the village was not annexed to the village. It stayed in Oak Brook. And this is the piece we're interested in annexing, consolidating the piece under R1, I guess it comes in as R1, and leaving it as a park at this point in time. We're not going to contest the restrictive covenant, and we're going to, we just want to have it in Westmont. So Westmont Park District should be in Westmont. So our request tonight is just to annex a half-acre piece that was missed back in 1985, and that's it. I should mention, the intergovernmental agreement has to do with Oak Brook. If Oak Brook, Oak Brook did disconnect this property, and if they decide to contest this annexation to Westmont, Park District will agree to defend Westmont in that proceeding if, in fact, it comes.
Bob, did you have anything you wanted to...
No. We're, as our attorney, Mr. Kubisa, said, we're just looking to simplify the process here and accomplish something that should have been executed nearly 16 years ago.
What, now, would this come back in as R1?
Yes.
And what assurance do we have that it would remain park if it's already zoned R1?
Well, you don't have assurances in writing at this point. None have been offered, but any development would have to be through, unless it were to be developed as a single-family house, which R1 permits.
Right.
We'd have to come back before this board, another public hearing, everyone would be notified, including residents of Oakbrook, I'm sure, as a courtesy, and given the relationship with Oakbrook, we'd notify the village, and we'd kind of start this all over again if that ever were to happen in the future. At this point, you know, the statement from the Park District is, there's no plans to do that.
Which, no offense, because of the contentiousness of this issue, I certainly would prefer something which we can hold in our hand that says that even though zoned R1, the Park District would not do anything with the property which would be a permitted use. Somebody wanted to build some goofy house in the middle of an island, you know, we've seen worse.
I would mention again this restrictive covenant that went along with the deed before we got it, and to that extent, we're not gonna contest that. And that would be that writing that you're asking for.
Well, I think certainly, you know, John, if it goes through you and you dot the i's and cross the t's.
Well, I'm certainly confident that the annexation is proper, and anything can be subject to challenge. That's why we have an indemnification agreement, so the village would not be out any money. Confident in the R1 zoning would not allow any multiple-family development that the surrounding residents have objected to. Can I predict what could happen in 10, 20, 30 years with the Park District situation in this property? Could they, does this annexation stop the Park District from 30 years from now coming back and seeking to develop the property? No, it doesn't do that.
What I would like to do is make a motion to postpone this to the next voting meeting, and also for the reason that I would like to check the village code and if staff could provide us all with permitted uses in R1, because there may be something that no one's considering right now, and that I would not want to surprise later, is a permitted use, that somebody wouldn't have to come in.
I think one of the things I had is, was gonna question is, when they came in the first time, they wanted to come in as an R2 because your other property was an R2.
No.
I mean, an A2, I mean, yeah, R2.
I don't know the answer to that, why it came in as R2, and maybe back in 1985, what currently is R2 was R1 at that point, or the village code might've said it comes in as R2. That's why we're R2 on the other, on the other property, or it might've changed in the end.
My question then is, well, why are you not coming in and want the, your parcel the same, so the entire thing, when you annex, is all R1?
I don't think it makes any difference, because a park is a permitted use in either R1 or R2. Our point is just, we want this all in Westmont. Westmont is our home. We're the Westmont Park District, we want this all in Westmont. We're not gonna develop it under either R1 or R2, so it doesn't make any difference.
Okay, but I wrote here, as you were speaking, that the first time, and you said, and these are your words, I'm going to leave it R1 at this time. That bothered me.
I'll just add, this is for us, for the Westmont Park District, this is not a zoning issue, and we are not requesting any special request for zoning or special zoning district. We're just looking to be in the Village of Westmont, like this property was supposed to be, and close the door on this particular matter.
Okay, so this covenant that was supposed to come, that evidently got lost and never got filed, or whatever the thing is, this covenant is now being installed, reactivated on this type?
No, the covenant, the covenant was recorded. It is recorded against this property. We're just not gonna contest it at this point.
It's just not recorded on our deed that was transferred from the Village of Westmont. It's on the deed that came from the Butler family to the Village of Westmont. So, it does exist, it is recorded.
Does that covenant run with the land? So, if it were to be sold?
Yeah, yes. Since it's recorded, it's there of record, and every, anybody who's gonna buy it, any developer is gonna see that on there and say, we can't use it.
It's a park.
Right.
It can only be a park and nothing else.
Right.
Well, there's one thing here that our village attorney has provided me, the section on permitted uses and special uses in residence districts. Non-residential uses include utility, public, and governmental uses, and freestanding antennas and towers of any kind. So, being an absolute freak on what cell companies will offer in order to get an antenna, I really wanna table this to make sure we don't get any surprises. And when I see things like freestanding antennas of any, of any kind, subject to certain restrictions, boy, that'd be a good place for one.
Can I ask? Now, that's a special use that requires, again, a public hearing.
Right, but still, it's, under our code, it is listed as a permitted and special use.
Just for the record, we have no deal with a cell company to put up our tower.
No, I understand that.
But we don't intend to either.
But I-
And we're not saying that you do.
I'm not saying that. I don't, I don't want any surprises. I want it, I want it left. And so, I want it locked up validly, that nothing's gonna come in that's permitted, even on a special use permit in an R1.
So, on attorney minds, is there anything that could be locked in to a contract that would make sure, wouldn't, that nobody could come back and ask for a special use for something we would not desire?
Well, yes and no. We're talking about a half-acre parcel that's being annexed. If you want to do an annexation agreement, you can impose whatever terms you feel like, whether they're reasonable or not reasonable. There is a much larger parcel adjacent to this.
Yeah, I think it's still a-
The Park District already owns, it's already zoned R2. It allows those similar uses, as in some cases permitted, in most cases, special uses. Again, those special uses could have unique impact. They require a public hearing, would have to come before you to approve. You can't control the larger parcel that's already within the village, so.
Can we rezone it?
But wouldn't the covenant prohibit that?
Let me make a couple of comments.
Yeah.
One, this is a half-acre piece of property. It's a little strip along Old Cass Avenue. You can't develop it on its own. And secondly, yes, the restrictive covenant was recorded against both pieces when we got, when it was given to the village, and then the village gave it to us. So, yes.
So, it's, none of that could happen anyway?
There is a quirk in that the village received the property with the deed restriction. That deed, for whatever reason, wasn't recorded right away. The village turned around, sold the property to the Park District, and that deed restriction language was not on the deed to the Park District. Subsequently, the village recorded its deed. So, whether the Park District could raise an argument that they were a good-faith purchaser without knowledge of this deed restriction, it could potentially be stricken in court.
Because also, when you look at the special and permitted uses, it has things like ancillary parking lots, and it's a permitted use to put like a nursing home or a care center, and then R1's got an ancillary parking lot. Weird things can happen, so I'll set my adamant on this.
And the other thing is, and I understand, you know, you're saying it's a half-acre parcel. If this issue wasn't an issue, I don't think there would be the number of people in this room tonight that are here. So, obviously-
I'm not sure all these folks know that we've withdrawn our application to zoning.
But I mean, just to show if people be Oakbrook or Westmont residents, either one, there obviously is a concern, or there is some interest in this particular situation. So, I mean, you know, we can say it's only a half-acre, but in today's times, with the way things are landlocked, a half-acre's a pretty good-sized parcel, when you get down to it.
And I think, I think one of the problems too is, I consider this temporary. We're voted in, we're voted out. A lot of the people, the Park District, you may be gone in 10 years, who knows who's where, and I'm looking at a new board, whether it's Park District, whether it's village or both, somebody coming in and seeing that property up there and not realizing what our intent was back then. And so, I was looking for something, when they go look up the property, this is gonna just scream at them, saying this was always meant to be open property.
That's why we wanna do what we're doing. That's exactly why. And the strip is a strip, it's a crescent-shaped strip. You can't, there's no room for setbacks or anything. You can't develop, it's undevelopable the way it is. Even for an antenna, you still need setbacks.
And the glaring thing you're talking about, trustee Klebanow, is restrictive covenant.
And would you explain that in greater detail? The restrictive covenant. What does that?
It says, it says it should be used for park purposes, period.
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 And that runs with the land, so it doesn't matter what's a permitted use in, what it's on yet?
Well, it does. There's two ways to restrict land. One is by zoning, the other is by covenant. In this case, with the R1 and R2 restricted the single family, but the covenant restricts it even further to Park District's only.
And how did the Park District decide they wanted to think about selling it and putting to a-
That was before we got into this whole, whole.
We were long into the process, one, the deed was, the original deed from Butler family to the village was discovered by the Village of Oakbrook. Our deed, which we had in our possession, didn't discuss a restrictive covenant. To us, it didn't exist.
So, would there be any benefit at all in annexing this piece and then cleaning up the zoning for this one plot and sort of reaffirming the restrictive covenant? Because does that covenant cover the part that hasn't been annexed? We don't know that, do we?
No, it does.
It does?
It does, subject to a potential legal challenge, because they received a deed that did not have that restrictive covenant on it, and that covenant had, that deed with the covenant had not been recorded yet. So, arguably, they were good faith without notice. In 20, 30 years, someone could object to that as being binding.
And that one was recorded first, too, wasn't it? The one was recorded first?
Park District's deed was recorded first.
Yep.
Prior to the village's deed, through some quirk back in the 80s.
And there's no way of redoing that covenant?
There is not. Your only control is through the annexation process, which, again, if you require that it remain as open space through an annexation agreement, you've controlled the crescent. You haven't controlled the remainder of the property, which is the largest portion.
Well, that's why I wondered if we did annex and then cleaned up the zoning, so it's all one zoning, and then put the restrictions upon the whole piece of land.
Well, of course, parties can voluntarily do that. You can't force it on the Park District for the larger portion.
But if they have no intention of doing anything with it, what's the difference?
That's true.
It's true. Wouldn't have an issue.
They should agree to it then, and I guess then we would find out.
Are you asking me a question?
We weren't asked a question.
Would you, if it was annexed and we're hearing this, would the Park District be agreeable to a rezoning of the entire property with the restriction that the entire, entire parcel remains a park?
I don't know the answer to that question, because it hasn't been raised to my park board, but I can say that there's no need to rezone the whole parcel, because they're both single-family zoning, and we don't intend to sell it to a developer and redevelop it. We're not gonna contest the restrictive covenant, and we're here to clean up, make this one piece of property in Westmont. It's, so in answer to your question, I don't know.
Well, why don't we ask the question then?
But the question is, the restricted covenant part, on the crescent part, yes, but the other parcel could be contested, correct? Is that, is that-
The whole thing.
The way I'm understanding this is because when, when the, when the property was sold-
It's actually the entire-
The whole thing can be contested.
Can be contested, as far as the restrictive covenant goes. I'm not saying they're going to.
I understand that.
Just throwing out the possibility.
Well, I'll go back to the idea of tabling it, and can we put the question to the Park District Board so that we get an answer to it? Because that would short-circuit everything, and we could say, here's, here's what they're gonna agree to over the entire parcel, and everybody's happy, and, you know, if there's reluctance on their part, we'll have to find out why and revisit it then. But if it is as represented, that this is what they wanna do with it, there shouldn't be an objection, but why don't we formally put the question to the park board? So that Mr. Kubisa gets an answer to the question.
Yep.
We're just trying to protect that land for future, for the future, what could happen when we're no longer here and we don't, or we're so old, we don't remember this verbal agreement, although I captured it all on a DVD, I could go back and listen to it.
You can hear, when you're old and-
This is, this is one of those items that I have to concur. I would postpone and put it. It's not something that I really wanna look at tonight and turn right around and give a vote on a particular item like this.
Well, this isn't time-sensitive in any way, is it?
Not really.
I don't think so.
Nothing's gonna be, I think that's probably good.
Table it, get an answer.
There is, then I request to table this item. Perhaps if we do table it, that from now until the time that it's brought up for discussion again for this board, those questions can all be answered clearly for all of us, and we can move forward at that, at that time.
The only other thing I'd ask, Mr. Mayor, is that we have a date certain, so everybody knows which date to come back for the meeting.
Would this be something that the park board could answer the question at their next meeting?
No.
Could it be put on the agenda?
The director's on vacation, so I don't know if it could be at the next meeting or not. Why don't I ask, and then I'll let the board know when we have an answer, and you can take it off the table.
Well, if you're gonna table it, I would suggest, you know, not to the next meeting, but maybe two meetings from now, which should be sufficient time, I would think.
Yeah, the mid-September meeting?
Can we change that wording to postpone? We're not tabling it, we're postponing.
Yes.
On which date is that?
September 15.
So, the date for further discussion would be-
15.
Is that the committee of the whole?
September 20th.
That's also the first day of the IML.
September 15th, should we?
That's also the first day of the Illinois Municipal League.
The 20th.
And we'll be at the conference. Might wanna make it that Wednesday.
I'll be here. Or just push it off further.
Or push it off further.
The 29th.
Do that, too.
I would recommend pushing it off further for our sake, because we do not meet again until September.
Oh. Then it'll be the 29th is the next committee of the whole after that, that-
Will that work?
I'm sure it will.
September 29th?
You got it.
29th of September.
Yes.
Will be the next date for discussion on this item. Thanks. Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
We need a motion to postpone until that date then.
We need a motion to postpone.
Motion to postpone.
Item until that date.
To September 29th.
September 29th. And a second?
Second, your own.
Go, go.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Klebanow?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
That I can vote on, yes.
Thank you all for coming in this evening.
Can I ask a question to the board? You brought up one point.
Could you come to the podium and give your name and address, please?
You brought up one point that you wish to further consider for-
Name and address?
My name's Richard Nitter at 3009 35th Street. There's a lot of us here, and we have a lot more points, so you could address the one, then come back on September 29th and say, we need to address the others. Since we've come here and we've spent our time showing up, I wonder if we could actually, in open forum, bring up our points. You could see the correct size of the parcel, you could see information about it, you could see resolutions passed, you could hear about petitions that are passed on the parcel. That'll bring up other points, which you then can bring back and discuss again on September 29th, since we've invested our time coming here to it. I'd appreciate the ability to speak in your open forum on this issue.
It's actually not open forum, it's still on the issue.
Excuse me, I have a petition. I'm a Westmont resident. I represent many of these people here today. I'm a board member of the Oakbrook Hills Club, and I have a petition here signed by 53 owners of West- I represent many of these people here today. I'm a board member of the Oakbrook Hills Club, and I have a petition here signed by 53 owners of Westmont property. I'd like to give it to the board and you, your honor, if I may.
That's fine.
To show you that, how interested we are in this process. So may I submit these to you?
Yes, you may.
Just hand them to the clerk.
Hand them to the clerk.
Yes, please.
Right here, right here in the white suit.
Okay.
It's cream.
Thank you.
Cream.
Okay, we have voted on this issue. What's the procedure to handle this request?
Was there, yeah, there was a vote.
We already voted.
Yeah, so you can, I think you simply reopen it if you wanna allow, after the fact, public input.
Yeah, I think we should.
For the board?
Yeah, it's fine with me.
Okay, with that.
To reopen?
Sure.
For public input.
Okay.
We have a motion to reopen and...
Second, Fleming. To reopen.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mayor, but we need a vote.
Got it.
Gocca.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Klebinau?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Okay, if you wanna come forward, we have a requirement of a three-minute time limit on your presentation. Mr. Mayor, yes?
Thank you, thank you. Honorable Mayor Ran, respected members of the board, and our village manager, Mrs. Seale, I had the opportunity to meet the manager as well as honorable Ran a couple of weeks ago, several weeks ago, as a matter of fact. And I want to actually, first of all, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Gopal Lalmalani. I am not an attorney. I am the village president of Oakbrook, and as you know, for many, many years, our two villages have had a longstanding history of working together. I appreciate the opportunity that you've given me today to speak on behalf of the residents of Oakbrook and the village of Oakbrook. It's always been the understanding of all the parties involved that this property was to remain for use for passive park purposes only. I know you are familiar with the Oakbrook's position on this issue. I was honored to have met Mayor Ran several weeks ago, and we touched on this subject. This property, which is about three-fourths of an acre, was part of a series of transaction in the 80s pursuant to which the intersection was reconfigured, and the property was transferred first from the Butler family to the village, and then from the village to the Park District. This piece of property has been within the Oakbrook's boundaries for many, many years. There has been a longstanding understanding and agreement between our two towns that this three-fourths of an acre of a property and the adjacent one, one-three-fourths of an acre of property, a little bit to the west of this property, should remain open space forever. As you know, this property was deeded by the Butlers to the village of Westmont in 1987, a deed restriction that was included and that runs with and binds the property and requires the property to be utilized only for passive park purposes. Last year, when the Westmont Park District approached the village of Oakbrook to disconnect the property, the Oakbrook Village Board assumed, based on all our prior understandings and agreement, that the Park District would comply with the deed restriction and keep this property as open space. We were appalled to learn later that the Park District wanted Westmont to annex and rezone the property to accommodate the Park District's plans to sell off the property to a developer and to build townhomes on this site. As a result, the Oakbrook Village Board repealed the ordinance, disconnecting the property, and we today stand by our actions. These two properties are inappropriate for any other use except open space. Anything other than passive park purposes would add more traffic to an area that has had significant and sight-distant issues. There has been numerous accidents at the 35th Street and Cass Avenue Midwest Road area, the S-shaped area that we are talking about, including a fatal accident and seven more accidents in the last seven years. The property is not appropriate for development because of its art size, lack of stormwater management, and is bound by the roadways on three sides. We do not object to the village of Westmont annexing this site if there is a written agreement that the property will remain open space forever. I proposed this to Mayor Ran at our last meeting several weeks ago, and this should not be an issue for these two communities who have always agreed that this property should be open space, and the Butler restricted covenant legally prohibits this property from being developed. So I would kindly ask the board to table this request from the Park District for annexation and direct your village attorney to contact ours to draft what would be a very simple agreement confirming what the deed restriction already clearly provides, that the property remains passive space for park purposes. This way, we can avoid litigation and to assure that the Westmont Park District and all the parties concerned will honor the longstanding understanding between the two communities on this property. The concern here is that we are not able to get confirmation from the village or the Park District that you concur that the deed restriction prohibits anything other than passive park purposes. Tonight, both the village and the Park District people are here. We ask the village board and its village attorney, do you believe that the deed restriction requires that the property be used only for passive park purposes? We also ask the Park District people, who I believe are here, do you believe that the deed restriction requires that the property be used only for passive park purposes? If the village of Westmont and the Park District will not confirm what seems clear to us, then very respectfully, please understand that the Oakbrook takes no real comfort in the fact that all this is before you tonight, is the annexation of the property and the automatic rezoning to R1, a classification which will allow for development, which is prohibited by the deed restriction. Further, without confirmation on the deed restriction, we have to conclude that the Park District withdrawal of its immediate request for R4 zoning is only a reaction to the current economic conditions and not an acknowledgement that the Park District has anyway abandoned its intent to sell this property for development. So much can be avoided if we could agree on the deed restriction. Without such an agreement, Oakbrook, the Butler family, and the Oakbrook residents will be left with very few choices in order to protect the rights and the public safety. Thank you again for giving me this opportunity, and I hope we can come to an understanding and some type of an intergovernmental or written agreement to this very simple fact that I have outlined in this talk today. I really appreciate the time you've given me today. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, may I just interject something here? There's a lot of people here tonight, and I know that this is very near and dear to your heart, and a lot of you have put a lot of time into this, but I think that it was pretty clear before what way this village board is gonna go on this. So although I appreciate that people wanna get up and say, please don't keep asking us not to let it be developed, I think it's pretty clear we wanna keep it a park. So if you have something else to add, fine, but if it's just to say, please don't let them develop it...
We're trying.
Please don't remind us that we don't want it to be anything but a park.
Earl Swallow, I will make one short response. Go ahead. I'm Dr. Earl Swallow. I'm the president of the board of the Royal Hills Club Condominium Association, 63-unit condominium association, about 100 residents of Westmont. Many of them are here this evening. You might put up your hands.
Who's watching the building?
And I was going to hand out a resolution that we had passed to make it clear that we were serious, including being willing to go to court if necessary to do that. The resolution authorizes me to seek legal counsel and retain them. I'll give you some copies of the resolution, but I guess, I think what I would like to say is, I wanna thank you. You're clearly doing what we were concerned to do, and that is make sure that the restrictions on the deed are actually recognized and in place in a way that we don't have to go through this, or people don't have to be watching for the next 10 years. And I'll just end with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I promise I won't keep you, ask you to keep it as a park, but I'm gonna give you some information. And we'll try to go as fast as we can to save time. Thanks.
Thank you.
Can you wait till you get to the podium so everyone can hear you?
'Cause they can't hear you on TV.
Yes, if you're gonna be a star, you gotta do it at the podium.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Richard Nitter, and my address is 3009 35th Street. And the reason I've come to the podium is to not have you, ask you to keep it as a park, but to offer you a potential solution. My potential solution is echoing what the village president of Oakbrook has asked for, which is an intergovernmental agreement. I'm gonna call it an open-space parcel intergovernmental agreement. It's the indented one-sentence paragraph on page one. If you pass that and agree to that, Oakbrook agrees to disconnect the parcel, and it agrees to be as open space, and there is not only the deed that has the passive park purposes copied for you in here, but there's also an agreement of why was this parcel of land to be annexed by Westmont and disconnected from Oakbrook? And that agreement has nine points. It doesn't have just one. And the second point of that agreement is highlighted in yellow. And the second point on that agreement is that it's to be a park. I've also included to you page two of that agreement, which shows the street before it was reconfigured. Then page 10 of what I've handed out to you is the street reconfiguration, and it clearly denotes something called a park, exactly where we're talking about. So it's not only the passive park, the passive park and the deed that we've copied for you on page 19, but there's also agreement. And that agreement came from some group called Westmont. It didn't come from Oakbrook. It was agreed, voted on by Westmont, and approved by Westmont, and then approved by Oakbrook. So there are other facts in this case that we wish to bring up to you to show you that it's an open park and should be open space. If you go to zoning maps, you look it up, it says open space. You go to Park District maps, and you're thinking of moving in the neighborhood, it says open space. We'd like you to keep it that way. If you have any questions, feel free to call. I got a lot of information for you.
And I will say, this would be a non-issue were it not for the quirk and the timing of the recording of the deeds.
Hi, I'm Alan Hanslick, 1609 Midwest Club Parkway, Oakbrook. Thank you for allowing me to speak. First of all, I won't read from my notes because you folks did a wonderful job probing and asking questions that we were going to raise. But I do wanna share a couple of thoughts. This has been a terribly frustrating process. Many of us in the room have spent hundreds of hours digging through documents, meeting with our village, meeting with the Park District, and it has been to no avail because we can't get a straight answer. The intent of the Westmont Park District is utterly clear. Based on the meeting of March 9th, 2011, the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, it was loud and clear. Rezone, sell to the highest and best price for high-density housing. The same that occurred on January 27th, 2009, and also a meeting in 2008. They're all public record, this has been discussed. The intent of the Park District was clear. But lo and behold, there is a deed restriction. The uncomfort we have is exactly the issue you raised. If we postpone a solid action on this piece someday at some point, six months from now or a year from now, or a year and a half, it will be back on the table, and all those hundreds of hours will have to be re devoted to this same action. So I think the people here are looking for your leadership on a document that, number one, reaffirms that this zoning is in fact correct, and number two, that things like cell towers don't end up in all of our backyards. That would be totally improper. I think the residents here, whether it's Oakbrook Village, the Condominium Association, or neighboring Oakbrook residents, are all fully prepared to take legal action to stop this. And to be honest, we will have no option but to pursue that if we can't come to final resolution because we've been unable to get clear direction from the Park District. It's almost like holding a wet fish, and I think our level of frustration has reached the boiling point. So I thank you so much for being so interested and for asking great questions, and we look forward to your leadership. Thanks.
Alan, I'm sorry. I didn't get your last name or address.
Hanslick, H-A-N-Z-L-I-K. Thank you.
And your address?
1609 Midwest Club.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. My name is John Kirkwood. I live at 3525 Cass Court in Royal Hills, which is in the village of Westmont. I'm deviating from my prepared testimony because of what I've heard this evening. I just wanna make a few brief comments. I think the Park District has been disingenuous from day one with regard to this issue. Initially, they set out to rezone this property and sell it. Whether there was a restriction in their deed or not, as counsel has mentioned, is beside the point. There is a restriction in the deed that may need to be litigated. But when counsel for the Park District steps up here and says, no plans at this time, as you picked up on, Ms. Klebinau, and questioned him, it just, it just makes me think what's gonna happen down the road. They annex the parcel, they come to you with this request just to annex it, but they also indemnify you against litigation. They are ramping up to take on the village of Oakbrook and pay for it out of Park District funds, which is ludicrous, absolutely ludicrous. What are they gonna cut from the Park District to pay for this? You know, summer jobs for kids, Park District programs? I mean, where are they gonna get thousands of dollars in legal expenses to take on the village of Oakbrook? You could put a stop to it, and that's why we're here tonight. We're asking you to put a stop. It's gone on for months and months and months. I think you've got the issue framed very clearly in your mind. We don't want development there. There's a restricted, there's a restriction in the deed. Counselor said, well, there may be a problem, it's not in the transfer over to the Park District. Fine, let's litigate it and find out what happens to that restriction. As Mr. Hanslick said, we are prepared in Royal Hills, Midwest Chase, Saddle Brook, and wherever else to raise a legal defense fund to see that that property remains exactly as it is. Thank you.
From day one, there has never been an attempt or a feeling of this board, in my understanding, to litigate this situation. We, right from the beginning, were more or less in agreement that we were not willing to litigate this item. So for anyone to think that the village was in favor of litigation is completely false because we never have taken that position.
And I think that's why they have come forward to you and say, relax, folks, we're gonna indemnify you. You don't have to worry about it, it's gonna be our problem, our money, we'll take care of it. I mean, it's this meticulous behavior on the Park District, handling city, getting the answer from them, somebody's gotta stop and say, enough, enough, knock it off. And that's up to the legal department.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Elaine Zanis. I'm a village trustee from Oakbrook. I live at 147 Briarwood, and I'm here to speak on the issue, obviously. I think this is a perfect time for us to fix it, to put it in writing, have members of the Park District, members of the village board, members of Oakbrook, get together, write the correct languish, language, excuse me, put language on both pieces of land that will protect them in perpetuity. Let's do it now. We all agree that it's intended to be park and open space. Let's make that happen. Let's never leave it to question or courts.
Good evening, members of the board and mayor. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Asif Youssef. I'm a village trustee in Oakbrook. I'm also a former resident of Westmont. I lived in the Oakwood subdivision for a few years. They're both great communities. We've raised some children in Westmont, some in Oakbrook. This issue's before you. The attorney for the Park District clearly stated there is a deed restriction, and what we're asking you to do is, as a measure of caution, and to avoid litigation down the road, or problems, or seeking attorneys' opinions... the road, or problems, or seeking attorneys' opinions, or whatever you call it, expense ultimately, affirm those conditions in the deed restriction in your, your agreement with the park district to annex it. And we respectfully ask that, to avoid any confusion over the issue in the future, that you, in addition, consider an agreement with Oakbrook protecting this as open, open space for the residents of Oakbrook, as well as the residents of Westmont. It's, it's a nice piece of property. It's a gateway to both communities. It's got some beautiful oak trees on it, less now than it had a month ago, but you could say that everywhere. And it enhances, again, the entrance, people coming from our community to yours and from yours to ours. It's, it's a beautiful piece of greenery, and it would, it would only confirm the, the intent when this property was originally conveyed to you by the Butler family. And it's, it's just a good thing to do. So I respectfully ask that you strongly consider language protecting the status of it in perpetuity for the sake of your residents and ours. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. I appreciate your coming this evening.
Thank you.
There you go. See you, guys.
Okay, we're through the item number two. Off we go. You know what I said, because I'm not going to hold up a different kind of grant. Yes, hello. You know my partner, Carolyn Craft. Yes, she's my partner, she's one of my partners. Yes, yes.
Thank you, thank you for coming in. Nice to meet you.
See you again.
Mr. President, how are you?
President, always a pleasure, thank you. Much, much better every day, thank you. I'm glad to do that.
Oh, okay.
We have, we have other choices.
Thank you, sir. Nice to meet you.
Welcome. Get on the block in Western. So we just need to see.
We are out of control.
Jenny, could you type up the names in here?
Anytime.
Yes, that would be most helpful. And it was very nice of some of you board to come and talk to us. Thank you.
Oh, I do.
On our best, thank you.
Brazil.
I just had to do that as good as it was.
Show in the road. Show in the road. Where'd the mayor go?
Did we recess?
No, we're still on tape, all my comments. He cuts this out when this happens.
For the public, we're just waiting for the mayor to return. There he is.
Here he comes.
New business. Downtown development grant, 15 South Cass. Board to consider an ordinance approving a downtown development grant for Ms. Melanie Abic for the Cafe Caladon at 15 South Cass. Please.
Good evening. We gave it to the drawing for the awnings and then signing the village around June, and then I left overseas, and then I came back, and then I spoke with Mrs. Shannon, and then she asked me the little information about the awnings, and then I am also mentioning, I'm not changing anything about the sizing, just the name and then color. And then she asked me to bring the material for the sample, what color it will be, and then what is the shape. I think you have the copy of it. I got my booklet. It's going to be solid blue. And then stripe, over here.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, if we could let the record show that the color of the fabric matches the landlord's shirt tonight?
Yeah. It surprises me all the time.
That's different, that's different than the color that it's been.
Yeah.
Blue shade already.
Yes, yes. And then we, we changed a little bit, you know, outside the siding, it's a blue, not purple eggplant color anymore. So I picked it up to this awning color. So this is the drawings, and everything will be same. Let me, aside, left and right, the 46-inch stripes. Here. And then this is a solid color. This is the name Cafe Caladon, and then 13 each leather size. And then the drop is 14 inches, here. And I am using four word, and then word, leather size is eight inch. This is Cass Avenue side, Cass Street. And then walk-up window, it will be same again, the name is changed, and then 12-inch size lettering, and then four feet wide. This is south side. Again, it's stripes, 13 each leather size, and then 12-inch drop, and then nine foot wide, and then three foot and six inch tall.
You're under a pending village board approval. Staff will work with the petitioner to ensure that all signage and lettering meets compliance with the current village code regarding signage allowances.
And a total two signings, less than 55 square footage, because requirement should be 55, and now I meet 54. This is the two awnings I described. This is the signing for the Quincy Street side. This is the back door. This is four feet tall, and then 16 foot long. I'm not using wood for the signing, just material for the same fabric. And then it looks like an awning, but it's not going to be an awning, just a six inch, it's attached to the wall, six inch, we're going to be put the metal, you know, the hinge, something like that. And I'm, I'm going to put the, you know, phone number, and what we are going to sell is like a euro salad, fandevich kebabs, because it's going to be 12-inch drop again, so lettering size, it's going to be eight.
That's the Quincy side, did you say?
This is the Quincy side.
But it's not.
It's a signing, it's not awning, but it's look like.
So it's going to be on the building? Where is it, how is it?
We are going to attach the building.
So flat on the building, or?
Six inch.
It's just an arc?
It's like, yeah.
Okay.
Arc.
Mr. Kimball, would you work with the petitioner as far as spelling and plurals and that type of thing?
Yes.
So that she's got it just right when she puts the order in?
Yeah. We regret that the assistant director was not here tonight. She's suffering from the stomach flu, and I know she's been having a dialogue with the petitioner in that regard.
Okay, good. So when, when will this happen?
I mean, I know it's kind of a delay, but you know, we have a family sickness in my mother, and I will take her to the overseas because she was in coma after we spoke over here in April. And then definitely, I would like to open August, end of August, or beginning September.
Good, we're anxious.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Your honor, this was met and reviewed by the Downtown Development Grant Committee, and I believe our recommendation is a part of the packet this evening.
So can I just go over, there's going to be an awning in the front in the parking lot side. There's going to be another one over the walk-up window, one in the back on Quincy by the back door. Is there the other one over that one stretch of window? Are there's two awnings on Cass, one rounded by the window, and?
And a signing at the Quincy.
So there's going to be on all three sides, you're going to be fully have awnings?
That's not an awning. It's a Quincy, Quincy Street, just a signing, but you know, differences, I'm not using wood, you know, it's like a Cafe Caladon. I am using this material to attach the building. That's not an awning.
It's a fixed awning.
Yeah, it's like, you know, six inch separated from the building.
From the building, okay, so it's just kind of like a little mini thing sticking out for a little?
Just a little tiny thing, yeah.
Okay, I got you.
The other things, the awning, we stick the old version, but I'm changing the color. I'm not extending or dividing it, nothing. Just the same. Thank you. Thank you, too.
Could you, if you wouldn't mind, for those that might be watching this on television and some of us, your menu very, very quickly again, the type of food, sandwiches that you're going to be serving?
Right now, I, I think I explained last time, but you know, I would like to.
I'm asking you to do it again.
Repeat it again.
It's good advertising.
Oh, thank you very much. I am going to special doing the vegetarian food, the gourmet salad. I am going to use the organic ingredients. And then other than that, I am going to do the kebabs, and euro, and salmon, mahi tuna. I am focusing the, you know, not the fry foods, you know, it's cooking well done, but you know, healthy.
Oh, okay. Very good.
Sounds good.
Thank you very much. You all invited.
They will all be there.
Thank you very much.
Those kebabs ready?
No junk, thank you.
Any further questions from board members? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve, Nero.
Second, Seneca.
Discussion, roll call.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Emory. Since she's changing her awnings, I'm changing my stance, and I'm not going to vote present, I'm going to vote yes. Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Clevino?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Clevino?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Beg your pardon?
Yes.
Yes. Flat easement and vacation request, 200 East Ogden. Board to consider an ordinance approving a flat easement and vacation request from Mercedes-Benz at 200 East Ogden Avenue.
Good evening, I'm Tom McKay with Spaceco. We've been the civil engineers for Mercedes, Audi, BMW. We're here tonight when BMW, I'm sorry, when we reconfigured the parking lots at Mercedes, there was an easement, an ingress, egress easement over that property to give the village access from Ogden back to the well site. So when we reconfigured the parking lot, we had to reconfigure the easement as well. So what we have now is the new easement, and I'm happy to report, we did not have to disconnect from another municipality. We're not looking for rezoning, and to date, we do not have a litigation fund started.
You're asking for a vacation, that's how tough it is. You want some vacation time.
So basically, all we're doing is we're moving, we're moving the existing ingress, egress easement that now has islands, landscape islands in the way. We're moving it over to align with the driveway that's there on the west side of Mercedes.
Questions? Do we have a motion?
So moved, Emory.
Second, Scott.
Final discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Emory?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Clevino?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Thank you. Enjoy your vacation.
Yeah, have a nice vacation.
Sorry you had to wait so long. Building code amendments, swimming pools. Board to consider an ordinance amending Chapter 18, Article 7 of the Westmont Code of Ordinances regarding swimming pool regulations.
Your honor, I think Shannon Malik and the village legal counsel have collaborated on this revision to the code, I think clearly stating what we want it to state. John, do you have any comments?
It was actually Vicky Senesak who collaborated with me, and it's just cleaning up some language. We enforce the international codes, and there was an outdated reference to the Boca codes in another provision. Cleaning that up. And there may be some others that we've recently caught, so you may see some similar cleanup in the, in the near future.
Like the next agenda item?
Well, that's a new item.
Okay, just checking. Motion to approve, Seneca.
Second, Nero.
Roll call.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Clevino?
Yes.
Trustee Emory?
Yes.
Now that most of our guests have left, on to the next item. Ordinance prohibiting public urination. Board to consider an ordinance prohibiting a person from urinating in or defecating in public view.
Can they still do it if nobody can see them?
Well, you can't do it in a pool, because you just changed that.
Right.
It's just still in the spirit of cleaning up. So we're going with the theme.
But that's a legitimate question and a question I have as well.
I had that circled. It bothered me saying "in public view." I don't understand why we have to say "in public view." Couldn't it just be all the time? I mean, whether you can see or not see.
Right, and I talked to the manager.
So when we reconfigured the parking lot, we had to reconfigure the easement as well. So, um, what we have now is, is the new easement, and I'm happy to report, we did not have to disconnect from another municipality. We're not looking for rezoning, and to date, we do not have a litigation fund started.
After asking for a vacation, that's how tough it is. If you want some vacation time.
So basically, all we're doing is we're moving, we're moving the existing ingress egress easement that now has islands, landscape islands in the way. We're moving it over to align with the driveway that's there on the west side of Mercedes.
Questions? Do we have a motion?
So moved, Emery?
Second, Scott.
Final discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Clevene?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Thank you.
Enjoy your vacation.
Yeah, have a nice vacation.
Sorry you had to wait so long. Building code amendments, swimming pools. Board to consider an ordinance amending Chapter 18, Article 7 of the Westmont Court of Ordinances regarding swimming pool regulations.
Your honor, I think Shannon Malik and the village legal counsel have collaborated on this revision to the code, I think clearly stating what we want it to state. John, do you have any comments?
It was actually Vicki Sinesak who collaborated with me, and it's just cleaning up some language. We enforce the international codes, and there was an outdated reference to the Boca codes in another provision. Cleaning that up. And there may be some others that we've recently caught, so you may see some similar cleanup in the, in the near future.
Good. Like the next agenda item?
Well, that's a new item.
Okay, just checking.
Motion to approve, Seneca?
Second, Nero?
Roll call.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Clevene?
Yes.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Now that most of our guests have left, onto the next item. Ordinance prohibiting public urination. Board to consider an ordinance prohibiting a person from urinating in or defecating in public view.
Can they still do it if nobody can see them?
Well, you can't do it in a pool, because you just changed that.
Right.
It's just still in the spirit of cleaning up.
What?
So we're going with the theme. But that's a legitimate question and a question I have as well.
I had that circled. I, it bothered me saying "in public view." I don't understand why we have to say "in public view," couldn't it just be all the time? I mean, whether you can see or not see.
Right, and I talked to the manager, we kind of had a laugh about that today, but in a more serious fashion, you know, I, I think that's a technicality that someone can try and get out of this ordinance by saying, "I was behind a tree or behind a fence, yes, I was on the sidewalk, but no one could technically see me, I wasn't in public view."
Well, if the police officer obviously saw him, if he gets caught.
Well, I'll tell you something, along with our alley issue are the guys that claim they're not in public view because they go behind the cars when they pee all over them. So although I was being facetious, obviously, it's, um, public anything, not just.
In public.
Just in public.
In public.
Public.
Well, if you're in a public bathroom, you're okay, I hope you, I hope so.
You never know.
Well, again, I guess for the purposes of enforcement, an officer or, or a member of the public would have to observe it, and there would be a follow-up investigation by an officer, you know, to, to ensure that a crime was actually committed.
Now, deputy chief, I saw that on the agenda that this item was raised by you. Do you currently charge them at least with public indecency, or do you just go, "Nothing we can do about it"? What's the, so that people know, because there are a lot of people in the downtown area that have been complaining about people peeing all over their cars and tires and everything. So, what, what are you doing now?
What we do now is we, we have been using the disorderly conduct statute, which is a little bit restrictive for, for the police to enforce, because we can't be the victim of a disorderly conduct. So we had to rely on members of the community to, to point us in the right direction for that, and in most cases, sign the complaint. Or we'd have to write an elaborate report where we was, you know, clear that members of the community were disturbed by the behavior. So that's what we currently do. This, this tool for our toolbox will allow us a little bit more latitude in enforcing this type of activity.
Let me also ask for purposes of people at home that are still watching, because they were waiting for this item to come up. What, um, how prevalent is this, that we had to bring it up to the village board to get this on the books? It's quite the problem downtown, isn't it?
We certainly see an uptick in the summertime, in the warmer weather months. Obviously, when there's more people on the streets, more people at local drinking establishments, more people walking up and down the alleys. We do definitely see a bump, uh, just based on the weather.
What is the, uh, what's the offense for, I mean, what's the, is it a fine?
Sure, it would be a village ordinance citation, so it would follow the same procedures as other village ordinance violations, so it would be custody, back to the station, issued a village ordinance citation, mandatory court appearance, fine, you know, have to see a judge, fine between seventy-five and seven hundred and fifty dollars.
And it makes the police blotter?
It will make the police blotter, sure.
Good. Is there, is there any, um, well, I'm not gonna pull any punches here. Is there more of a problem with certain places? Is it the uptown? Is it Potbelly? Is it just guys roaming the neighborhood? Is there a specific place that there's a problem? You know, homeless guys at the train, all that, that we really need to?
Sure, I would say in your, you know, the downtown area, your major population centers, more of your commercial zones, you're seeing, obviously, where there's more people is more of a, of a chance. Not to say that we don't see it in apartment complexes on, in, you know, the north and south end of town. I wouldn't pigeonhole to any specific area in town, but certainly, where you have a bunch of people, you have the, the potential.
Okay, well, I was just curious, because if we had a, a certain business that it seemed to be that their reaction to us changing the time to serve liquor was to have their patrons go out and pee all over the neighbor's cars, I'd certainly wanna know about it. Because we can always change the liquor license to noon.
Sure, and in conjunction with this ordinance, if it's adopted, on behalf of the mayor, who also serves as liquor commissioner, we will be notifying all the liquor establishments of the new ordinance.
Good.
Have we, have we checked with other towns for this type of ordinance? Because I, still bothers me saying "in public view," and then, under the article, you explain what you mean by "public way" and "public place," but you don't explain what you mean by "in public view."
The ordinance doesn't say "public view." That's just on our agenda item.
No, the ordinance does.
It does?
The ordinance says it, yeah, on the ordinance.
It needs just to be said "public."
The first line.
Yeah, could you just say "in public," period?
Right, actually, first line. Upon any public way.
I see Deputy Chief Gunther's point, which is someone has to view it. A police officer needs to view it for it to be a violation. On the other hand, I can also see a situation where you kind of have some circumstantial evidence. A guy's behind a car or a bush, you think you know what he's doing, you get up there, you see the evidence, and his defense is, "Well, he wasn't in public view." So I would prefer to have that phrase "in public view" stricken from the ordinance. I don't see any compelling reason to have it in there. Obviously, you're gonna have to observe it in some form or another in order to write a citation.
So it's just gonna read that "upon any public way," finding that such act is a health issue?
Well, any way in public.
Any public way or public place?
Any public way.
If, if you have to go down to the highlighted part of the ordinance.
Yeah, so it's gotta.
And that is the body of the ordinance.
Well, if you, what do you wanna do with this, John? Do you wanna take it back, tweak the ordinance to take the language out of the highlighted part and put it into the first paragraph, so that it covers both "public way" and "public place"?
I think all you need to look at is the highlighted area, because that is what is going to go into the code. And the code says it's unlawful to urinate or defecate upon any public way or public place, period.
Okay.
But it's, yeah, but it does say "in public view" over there.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, but you take that out.
Cut that out.
And you can vote on it with, with that change that I can, you know, that may can get to the mayor for signature.
Okay, good, good.
That works.
Motion to approve, Emery?
Oh, I've got a, I've got another, another question.
Sure.
Can a person in the, in the public report this to the police and you can arrest them? Or do the police actually have to see this occurring?
If a member of the public observed it, we would prefer that they sign the complaint, because they're the witness.
And the problem is, a lot of times, they don't wanna get involved.
Sure, we, we can still show up, and we will take whatever enforcement action we can, and if we can prove that it in fact occurred, just like any, any crime after the fact, if we're there in a short proximity and person standing here, and the evidence is, is right there, and we ask a couple of quick questions, and, and we can, you know, make a case. One of the points that Chief Waller just brought up to my attention, and the nuances of "you" and, you know, the word, if, if, if I'm a homeowner, I'm standing on, in my, in front of my yard, I'm on private property, but somebody observes me, who's in, you know, it would be a public view situation where I, you know, you'd be standing on the street, I'm on my private property, and I'm, you know, engaging in bad behavior, is that, just removing the "public view" part, you know, kind of messed that situation up?
I don't think that's as prevalent a problem as the other is.
Someone doing this on private property you're talking about?
Yeah.
But being observed from the public place, so I'm saying.
My question was, you were dealing between "public view" and "public way." Is private property a public way, or would that?
No, because it's specifically defined what a "public way" means, which is streets, roads, alleys, sidewalks, boulevards, rightsways, and parkways.
It does say.
"Public place" talks about publicly owned buildings, grounds, parking lots. This isn't urination on your own, in your own backyard.
The other part would be too, is back in the alley, I'm on private property, I'm on the, I'm the property of a restaurant, or I'm the property of a business owner, I'm on private property, but I'm still doing it in an alley. Would that prevent us from?
No, because it, it does go on there, building grounds and parking lots and privately owned buildings.
That could be a home.
And it's customarily open to the public, the alleys certainly are.
That was only, my concern was making sure that, and Deputy Chief Gunther also brings up a valid point. I mean, if I go on a backyard and I go into somebody else's backyard, trespassing, we could work on it that way as well, but, you know, I just wanna make sure that, that.
I don't know.
I agree, if it's seen, it's "public view," somebody has to see it in order to report.
Yeah, I mean, I can see where they're coming, because, yeah, because this, this says "customarily open to the public," so even though it's private property, it still has to be something owned by the, you know, that public would go into. So that would not be normally a residential backyard.
Well, privately owned building is residential.
But if the person goes onto somebody's yard.
Which are actually customary open to the public, which would mean her.
Yeah, if somebody goes onto somebody else's yard, they obviously believed it was open to the public, so they'd be hard pressed to say, "I went on somebody's private property."
I'm thinking of the homeowner itself, being too lazy.
Well, if that's a big problem with homeowners, you know, then we have other issues in this town, don't we?
Okay, but I'm just saying that, that, that's why I think the, the private property problem would come in, but I don't think it's as prevalent as the people who mistake where they're.
Maybe we could add it to the comprehensive plan, and we could discuss it then.
No, if it's on private property and it's your home, then it becomes premeditated urination.
Not in my backyard.
Well, anyway.
Do we have a motion and a second?
Motion to approve, Nero?
I already, I think we already did that, didn't we?
Second, Nero?
No, I got a motion, but I didn't get a second.
No, you don't.
Second, Nero?
Roll call.
Trustee Emery?
Yes, I was just trying to figure out how the chief gave up all that podium time to the deputy chief on such a.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Clevene?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Next item, resolution for maintenance of streets and highways by municipality under the Illinois Highway Code. Board to consider a resolution approving the requests to appropriate the sum of fifty thousand dollars for the village's participation in the Downers Grove Township annual street maintenance program from the municipality's allotment of motor fuel tax funds.
Mayor, our general street resurfacing program that we do with motor fuel taxes is a, is a multiple street location. The township and the county do similar types of projects, and last year, Downers Grove Township resurfaced a number of streets up in Liberty Park, and they did approach us to do, you know, a cooperative project. Unfortunately, they did it like the week before they were planning to pave. And for example, Forty First Street and Forty First Street were paved, and, but they, they stopped their project fifty feet away, you know, from the, at the village boundary, but, you know, not all the way up to the intersection. So we've agreed from now on that we were gonna, you know, coordinate our projects and, and do our half blocks, you know, where the boundaries are in, are in odd places, instead of just, you know, stopping the project. So this is an MFT resolution appropriating fifty thousand dollars of our motor fuel tax fund towards a project that they're implementing, and that we will cover, um, Park Street and Washington Street, so that they can resurface all the way down to Ogden Avenue, and we're picking up the expenses that apply to the portions in the village of Westmont. This doesn't preclude us from doing our bigger project with the balance of the funds either, though.
When you get a, um, project like that, we have to use, there are people who are out there doing it, people they've already hired? I mean, is the pricing comparable, what we would have gotten?
It is, being the motor fuel tax and a resurfacing, they're, they are also under the jurisdiction of the Illinois Department of Transportation for, for appropriate use of these funds. So the projects are, you know, very similar, and, so they will administer the project and coordinate it. All we're doing is encumbering fifty, up to fifty thousand dollars of that funds to apply towards the portions that would be on our side.
And is it up to fifty, or?
That's the maximum amount that.
Okay, so it's fifty or under, it could be under?
Right, it is something under that as well, right? I'm trying to get the Forty First and Forty First Street that they missed last year re-added in, and this number counts for that too.
But it, but it would be under the same, pretty much the same bids that we would have received if we were to.
Yes, it's still competitive bidding and, right, it's just they're administering it as opposed to us.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
No. Motion to approve, Emery?
Second, Scott.
Roll call.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Trustee Clevene?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Since we voted on this, I just wanna make the point out that the attachment here has the date of August fifteenth. Make sure we change the date before we sign the attachment.
You mean the board action request?
Yeah, well, yeah, this Illinois Department of Transportation.
Oh, the actual?
The document.
The resolution.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, it has August fifteenth on it, and so that's the, so that's the next one we're about ready to vote on, so we'll have to make sure we watch that date.
Good.
Yes.
Next item. Resolution for improvement by municipality under the Illinois Highway Code. Board to consider approving a resolution for improvement by municipality under the Illinois Highway Code, BLR 09111, for the 2011 pavement management study.
Mayor, this item and actually the, the next item are the same project. It is the, the engineering study that we just talked about at the Public Works Committee meeting. The item ten is the, the actual engineering services agreement, and item nine is the resolution appropriating motor fuel tax funds to pay for that service.
Okay. Taking one at a time? Motion to approve, Fleming?
Second, Emery?
Roll call.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Clevene?
Yes.
Item ten, 2011 pavement management study. Board to consider ordinance approving an agreement with Infrastructure Management Services, IMS, for engineering services for the 2011 pavement management study. Do we have a motion? Motion to approve, Fleming?
Second, Nero?
Discussion, roll call.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Trustee Clevene?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Next item, engineering services agreement with Civil Engineering Services Incorporated. Board to consider an ordinance approving a proposal from Civil Engineering Services for the Phase Three Construction Inspection Services for the Hidden View Drive Reconstruction Project.
This engineering services agreement with the Hidden View Drive project, the actual construction project, was just recently awarded. CES was the design engineer, and the Phase Three engineering is the construction inspection portion of the services, so they will be doing the, you know, the construction oversight. So this is the engineering services agreement for that company for that project.
Questions? Roll call.
I don't have a motion.
So moved, Seneca.
We have a motion.
Second, Nero?
Roll call.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Clevene?
Yes.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Engineering Services Agreement with Baxter Woodman. Board to consider an agreement with, for engineering, construction, inspection services regarding the water plant roof replacement project.
The roof replacement, which also was just recently bid, Baxter and Woodman was the design engineer, and similarly, this is a engineering services agreement for the construction inspection and testing services for that project.
In, in our packet, we had two different Page Ones. One of the agreement was May second, which was for sixteen thousand two hundred, but in larger print, the Page One is for nine thousand five hundred. Is, are these two different, or did the price go down?
There were, um.
The project number is a tad different too, because it's from eleven zero zero forty point forty, and the other one is point sixty, so I didn't know if these were two different projects.
There were two different engineering services agreement, and what happened was is that, at, at one point, and a few meetings ago, we've actually already approved the purchase order for this Phase Three engineering, referencing a village board approval for what was actually the Phase Two engineering contract, so by mistake. So we've approved the purchase order, but this is a separate agreement than the one that was voted on earlier.
Okay, so is the price different then, is it better, it's cheaper then, or is?
No, it's a different, for the services.
It's a whole different, okay. So we're still, the sixteen thousand still is good for the first?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion? Motion?
Motion to approve, Seneca?
Second, Emery?
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.
Finance ordinance number eight.
We have before us, on this 11th day of August 2011, a finance ordinance in the amount of $727,021.16.
Motion to approve, Seneca.
Second, Scott.
Discussion, finance ordinance number eight.